Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, the 18th day of October 2022. This is a special meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. We had a planned 4:00 PM start. My watch shows 4:03 PM. I will now call the roll. Councilperson Ridley? Not here. Councilperson Prinzari?
Here.
Councilperson Boziano?
Yeah.
Councilperson Saleh?
You're here.
Councilperson Solomon?
No, I'm here, sorry, previewing. Here.
Councilperson Gilmore?
Present.
Councilperson Dejez?
Here.
Council President Protem Rivera?
Here.
And Council President Waterman?
John, can I just say something? I think Jerry McCann should be here, and I think Jack Skura should be here, and we should have them speak.
Duly noted, I'm still counting the roll. We have five council persons here. We have obtained a quorum at 4:04 PM. Kindly rise for a moment of silence, and please remain standing while we salute the flag. On behalf of Council President Waterman, in accordance with Chapter 231 of the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, officially known as the Senator Byron M. Baer Open Public Meetings Act, and more commonly known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided to the Jersey Journal, the Hudson Reporter, and El Especielito via email on October 14, 2022, at 4:26 PM. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board on the first floor of City Hall. The agenda of this meeting was disseminated to the municipal council, mayor, business administrator, corporation council, and local newspapers on Monday, October 17, 2022, at 3:25 PM. The agenda was concurrently posted on the city's website, and consequently, I can certify as to this meeting's complete compliance with the Sunshine Law. Ladies and gentlemen, there is only one agenda item up for consideration today, and that is Resolution 22-753, a resolution to adopt the municipal budget for calendar year 2022. Note that Councilperson Ridley has just shown up at 4:06 PM. Allow me to briefly recite the procedural history which preceded this meeting. On June 15, 2022, the municipal council approved Resolution 22-409, which introduced the municipal budget. On October 13, 2022, the municipal council approved Resolution 22-716, which introduced amendments to the municipal budget. On October 14, 2022, the proposed budget as amended was published in full in the Jersey Journal, as was the notice of today's special meeting. In accordance with New Jersey Statute 48:4-8, I am required to read the entire proposed municipal budget as amended into the record prior to the public hearing. Council President, with your permission? I'll begin reading that now. I note that Councilperson Saleh is here at 4:07. General Revenues. Part One. Surplus anticipated: $14,333,829.00 to zero. Part Two. Surplus anticipated with prior written consent of the Division of Local Government Services: From $10,750.00 to zero. Total surplus anticipated: From $14,350,579.00 to zero. Part Three. Miscellaneous Revenues. Section A, Local Revenues. Atkinsack Meadowlands Tax Share Adjustment: From $1,145,117.00 to $1,105,893.00. Total Section A Local Revenues: Section B. State Aid Without Offsetting Appropriations. Building Aid Allowance for School Aid: From zero to $533,722.00. Municipal Relief Fund: From zero to $3,330,387.00. Total Section B State Aid Without Offsetting Appropriations: Section F. Public and Private Revenues. OLPH Strengthening Capacity: From zero to $274,735.00. Clean Communities: From zero to $462,879.13. Transit Village: From zero to $175,000.00. Body Armor Replacement Fund: From zero to $33,654.88. EJA Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding: From zero to $465,206.00. Body Armor Replacement: From zero to $58,813.63. NJUCF Stewardship: From zero to $50,000.00. Federal Highway Administration: Jersey City Morris Canal Greenway: From zero to $5,142,980.00. OLPH Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program: From zero to $643,872.00. NJLM Virtual Learning: From zero to $10,000.00. Sustained Enforcement Grant: From zero to $39,960.00. UEZ Off Duty Police: From zero to $986,481.00. UEZ Administrative Budget: From zero to $394,593.00. FHWA Subregional Transportation Planning Program: From $105,530.00 to $211,060.00. Community Service Block Grant: From zero to $342,611.00. Federal EHE: From zero to $300,000.00. WIC: From zero to $1,874,288.00. Total for Public and Private Revenues: Section G. Special Items of General Revenues. Sale of Municipal Properties: Sale of Easements: $41,000.00 to $49,500.00. FEMA Reimbursements: Due from State and Federal: From zero to $16,618,147.51. Due from the Affordable Housing Interfund: From zero to $2,843,261.00. Due from Vendor Cleaning Interfund: From zero to $5,457,738.4. CARES Act reimbursements: From zero to $355,317.00. Morgan Street Developers: 16th Street Urban Renewal: 312 Pacific Avenue: From $51,991.73 to $48,699.90. Genesis Ocean Urban Renewal: From $61,326.35 to $29,343.39. Ash Urban Renewal: From $288,826.17 to $297,560.51. HC West Campus Urban: HC West Campus 1 Urban Renewal: From $497,822.49 to $497,821.78. 319 Tonley Avenue: From $71,344.13 to $194,700.20. The New LLC: From $7,504.80 to $9,903.1. 361 Newark Avenue: From $23,239.55 to $71,553.87. Hudson Main Urban Renewal: From $51,360.00 to $18,819.33. Liberty Harbor North 3 Urban Renewal: From $377,918.61 to zero. Lafayette LP: Lafayette Community LP: Leyd Law Properties Urban Renewal: From $285,393.29 to $138,651.35. 720 to 726 Urban: Sorry, 720 to 726 Urban: Bergen Avenue Urban Renewal: From $160,597.37 to $105,848.4. AH Moore Phase 2: Storms Avenue Elderly Apartments: 272 Groce Street: Barbara Place Phase 3: From $46,695.32 to $38,886.24. Salem Lafayette Housing: Unico Apartments: From $308.81.31 to $252,66.53. Jones Hall Associates: From $153,392.56 to $139,465.3. The Port Authority of New York and New Jersey: From zero to $736,304.79. Mullenberg Gardens Senior Center: Bergen Manor Associates: From $39,923.69 to $39,033.23. Kennedy Manor Associates: From $12,549.49 to $7,871.16. Montgomery Gateway 1: From $274,128.78 to $240,696.61. Montgomery Gateway 2: From $202,870.6 to $211,633.4. 2854 Kennedy Boulevard: From $270,103.60 to $189,496.29. ISA: From $14,359.60 to zero. AH Moore Phase 1: From $41,122.93 to $30,765.55. 747 Grand Street: From $21,883.37 to $14,438.19. AH Moore Phase 3: From $64,252.17 to $62,312.69. NC Housing Association Number 100: From $1,074,770.4 to $980,119.68. NC Housing Association Number 200: From $1,586.22 to $1,356,214.14. Newport Weston: Lafayette Phase 2: From $52,902.21 to $38,400.00. Portside Urban Renewal: The Toy Factory Apartments: From $55,262.53 to $36,856.63. 33 Park: From $1,924,065.44 to $1,077,442.60. Sugar House: From $615,900.58 to zero. KRE Hamilton Urban Renewal: From zero to $770,303.49. Arlington Arms Apartments: From $39,599.80 to $30,298.20. Padua Urban Court Renewal: From $40,777.25 to $25,939.39. Quality Housing: From $152,247.6 to $135,493.22. Otterbon Park Associates: From $112,69.66 to $111,762.66. Woodward Terrace: From $52,425.40 to $33,765.90. Van Weggan Avenue 2: From $145,494.66 to $140,682.66. Mid-City Apartment Urban Renewal 2: From $7,970.42 to $5,363.92. Resurrection House: From $2,562.23 to $3,843.34. Ull Development: From $1,332.85 to $1,999.27. Arlington Apartments: From $19,305.96 to $28,958.94. Arlington Gardens: From $19,305.96 to $28,958.94. Villa Barrinquin 2: The Mercury Urban Renewal: From $402,460.60 to $278,742.2. Town Cove North Urban Renewal: From $400,286.67 to $748,390.0. Mid-City Apartment Urban Renewal 1: From $11,410.92 to $9,839.0. From JH and RC Senior Homes: From $41,306.74 to $2,940.66. From 3 Journal Square: From $697,617.41 to $416,635.85. Fairmont Hotel: From $92,249.6 to $64,623.82. The New Community Hudson Senior Center: From $45,548.71 to zero. Pinnacle Tower Urban Renewal: Newport Office Tower 8: Police Home Urban: Project Home Urban Renewal: From $18,074.50 to $7,767.20. It's from $7,000 to $7,767.20. Athena Building 110 Urban Renewal: 17-19 Division Street Urban Renewal: From $55,977.5 to $34,523.55. Cali Harbor Plaza 4: From $217,120.60 to $344,411.8. Cali Harbor Plaza 5: From $2,308,948.33 to $2,41,484.0. 99 Rutgers Avenue: From $13,419.17 to $5,975.1. Devi Ma Newark Urban Renewal: From $42,580.43 to $22,273.79. Plaza Number 10 Urban Renewal: From $1,301,585,000... Orpheum Urban Renewal: From $418,360.80 to $367,407.3. HP Urban Renewal: From zero to $888,000... Paramount Urban Renewal: Let's Celebrate: From $51,322.78 to $30,135.54. Oswa Court: From $95,781.6 to $56,269.73. The Tower Urban Renewal: 77 Hudson Street Urban Renewal: Genesis: From $26,310.23 to $3,405.11. Forest Senior Citizen Center: From $59,663.31 to $41,213.30. AHM Housing Associates 4: From $56,335.77 to $48,489.85. Red W. Martin Apartment Urban Renewal: From $57,102.95 to $40,369.22. Jersey City Medical Center: From zero to $550,000.00. Kennedy Lofts Urban Renewal: From $119,881.94 to $67,020.52. Provo Square 1 Urban Renewal: Chosen Condominiums: From $130,014.20 to $121,508.60. Harborside Unit A: 70 Columbus Urban Renewal: Maribeloff Tower Phase 2: 242 Bergen Court: From $12,626.78 to $3,464.74. 242 Bergen Court, from $12,626.78 to $3,464.74. 148 First Street Urban Renewal, from $561,779.13 to $377,365.55. All right, folks, this starts to run together after reading this after long as I have been. Boya 75th Urban Renewal, $955,456.50 to $582,337.23. Ocean Green Senior Building, from $31,300,31, sorry, from $31,636.2 to $13,639.14. Senate Place Urban Renewal, from $748,562.14 to $500,752.16. 369 Street, from $419,329.75 to $304,563.55. Greenville Steering, from $13,135.81 to $10,910.38. 90 Columbus, from $683,910.85 to $2,368,958.2. 234 Sidem Urban Renewal, from $213,531.81 to $135,915.85. Baishno Ma Summit Urban Renewal, from $198,747.4 to $202,241.77. 276 St. Paul's Avenue, from $5,879.20 to $18,667.54. KKF Block 5B Urban Renewal, from $431,81.60 to $402,880.0. One Exchange, from $861,862.80 to $793,547.87. Columbus Hotel Urban Renewal, from $536,550.68 to $64,421.30. South Block LLC, from $120,944.60 to $343,714.16. Montgomery Senior Living, from $96,476.4 to $23,791.58. GSFC Pep 1, from $1,055,956.38 to $483,732.83. 295 McGovern Drive, $156,594.28 to $160,011.55. Lenview Townhouses 2, from $69,270.41 to $36,422.31. Journal Square 2, from zero to $41,498.34. 223 Pine Acquisition LLC, from $8,446.24 to $34,132.48. HP Roosevelt Apartments, from $669,750.49 to zero. GSFC Pep 2, from $478,229.31 to $36,02.70. Journal Square 1 Urban Renewal, from $427,275.0 to $22,276.0. The Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, 2 Montgomery, from $419,790.80 to zero. 3324-3328 Kennedy Boulevard, from $21,611.23 to $87,334.15. The Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, 100 Academy, from $66,90.40 to zero. The Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, 90 Columbus, from $66,90.40 to zero. 837 Jersey Avenue LLC, from $60,726.78 to zero. St. Bridget Senior Resident Building, from $41,779.73 to zero. 121 Gara Brand, from $28,924.79 to $113,943.31. Laxmi MA First LLC, $25,174.78 to $32,447.4. 461 through 463 Newark Avenue, from $23,239.54 to $57,558.43. Blue Water Homes, from $19,616.92 to $27,179.95. Grand 170, from $4,968.64 to $22,947.2. Brunswick 124, from $11,582.31 to $45,625.84. HC West Campus 2, from zero to $551,267.41. 20 River Court West, from zero to $1,600,258,958.95. Total Section G Special Items of Revenue, from $231,604,743.20 to $249,668,761.52. Summary of Revenues. 1. Surplus Anticipated, from $14,339,829.0 to zero. Surplus Anticipated with prior written consent of Division of Local Government Services, from $10,750.0 to zero. Miscellaneous Revenues. Total Section A Local Revenues, $41,388,565.0 to $41,349,341.0. Total Section B State Aid Without Offsetting Appropriations, $63,860,522.0 to $67,724,631.0. Total Section C Dedicated Uniform Construction Code Fees Offset with Appropriations, from $7,482,868.0 to $7,482,868.0. Total Section D Shared Service Agreements, from zero to zero. Total Section E Additional Revenues, from zero to zero. Total Section F Public and Private Revenues, from $9,841,800.34 to $21,202.40. Total Section G Other Special Items, from $239,604,743.20 to $249,668,761.52. Total Miscellaneous Revenues, $354,178,498.51 to $387,428,5.50. Receipts from Delinquent Taxes, $2,49,360.42 to $2,49, it's $2,49,360.42. Subtotal General Revenue, from $370,578,437.96 to $389,477,365.92. Amount to be raised by taxation for support of the municipal budget. Local tax for municipal purposes, including reserve for uncollected taxes, from $307,978,195.82 Additional to local district school tax, $1,586,903.70 to $654,428.0. The minimum library tax, from $15,120,661.0 to $15,120,661.0. Total amount to be raised by taxation for support of the municipal budget, Total General Revenues, from $695,264,198.48 to $724,818,600, sorry, Account Description: General Appropriations. Operations Within Caps. Office of the Mayor: Salaries and Wages, from $1,243,552.0 to $1,268,500, sorry, Cultural Affairs: Salaries and Wages, $1,020,64 to $949,824.0. Cultural Affairs: Other Expenses, from $656,75.0 to $856,75.0. Office of the City Clerk and Municipal Council. City Clerk: Salaries and Wages, from $1,124,41.0 to $1,050,803.0. Municipal Council: Salaries and Wages, from $3,718,600.0 to $3,338,600.0. Municipal Council Other Expenses, from $193,725.0 to $222,525.0. Department of Administration. Administrator's Office: Salaries and Wages, from $2,080,914.0 to $1,883,955.0. Administrator's Office Other Expenses, from $148,775.0 to $158,775.0. Communications: Salaries and Wages, from $573,501.0 to $645,317.0. Human Resources: Salaries and Wages, from $2,612,673.0 to $2,730, sorry, Human Resources Other Expenses, $1,142,200.0 to $1,167,200.0. Internal Audit: Salaries and Wages, $395,250.0 to $483,492.0. Information Technology: Salaries and Wages, from $907,358.0 to $933,558.0. Municipal Court: Salaries and Wages, from $5,793,764.0 to $5,841,374.0. Department of Finance. Finance Director's Office: Salaries and Wages, from $366,347.0 to $256,347.0. Management and Budget: Salaries and Wages, from $656,904.0 to $1,44,355.0. Purchasing and Central Services: Salary and Wages, from $808,678.0 to $781,246.0. Treasury and Debt Management: Salaries and Wages, from $570,556.0 to $499,550.0. Treasury and Debt Management: Other Expenses, from $365,500.0 to $375,375.50. Grants Administration: Salaries and Wages, from $248,000.0 to $168,000.0. Grants Administration: Other Expenses, from $208,000.0 to $158,000.0. Counts and Controls: Salaries and Wages, from $737,905.0 to $611,300.0. Tax Collections: Salaries and Wages, from $790,840.0 to $695,633.0. Tax Collections: Other Expenses, from $174,800.0 to $284,587.0. Office of the Tax Assessor. Tax Assessor's Office: Salaries and Wages, from $1,013,000.0. ten thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and zero cents to one million, sixty-one thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars and zero cents. Tax Assessor's Office: Other Expenses from four hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and zero cents to five hundred, sorry, to three hundred thousand, three hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and zero cents. Department of Law: Corporation Counsel's Office: Salaries and Wages from three million, five hundred thirty thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and zero cents to three million, two hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars and zero cents. Department of Public Works: Public Works Director's Office: Salaries and Wages from three hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollars and zero cents to two hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars and zero cents. Buildings and Streets Maintenance: Salaries and Wages from three hundred four, three million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and zero cents to three million, five hundred seventy-four dollars, sorry, three million, five hundred seventy-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and zero cents. Sanitation: Salaries and Wages, six million, from six million, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars and zero cents to six million, six hundred and eight dollars, sorry, six million, six hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and two dollars and zero cents. Solid Waste Recycling: Salaries and Wages from one million, seventy-four thousand and ninety-three dollars and zero cents to one million, four hundred six thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and zero cents. Solid West, Solid Waste Recycling: Other Expenses from two million, eight hundred ninety thousand dollars and zero cents to two million, six hundred forty thousand dollars, two hun, sorry, two million, six hundred forty thousand, four hundred dollars and zero cents. Administrative Services: Salaries and Wages from one million, six hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars and zero cents to one million, six hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars and zero cents. Forestry: Salaries and Wages from three hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred nine dollars and zero cents to five hundred twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars and zero cents. Automotive Maintenance: Salaries and Wages from two million, three hundred sixty-six thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and zero cents to two million, three hundred thirty-three dollars, sorry, two million, three hundred thirty-three thousand, six, three hundred sixty-three dollars and zero cents. Department of Public Safety: Department of Public Safety Director's Office: Salaries and Wages from one million, two hundred fifty thou, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars and zero cents to one million, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, five, four hundred eleven dollars and zero cents. Police: Salaries and Wages from one hundred nine million, eight hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and zero cents to one hundred and six million, nine hundred ninety, nine hundred twenty-two million, sorry, one hundred and six million, nine hundred twenty-two thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars and zero cents. Fire and Emergency Services: Salaries and Wages from seventy-nine million, two hundred fifteen thousand, ninety-six dollars and zero cents to seventy-six million, eight hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars and zero cents. Communications and Technology: Salaries and Wages from six million, four hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred forty-five dollars and zero cents to six million, six hundred thousand, forty-eight, four hundred eighty-nine dollars and zero cents. Quality of Life: Salaries and Wages from three million, six hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and zero cents to four million, one hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred thirty-eight dollars and zero cents. Traffic and Parking: Salaries and Wages from five million, five hundred sixty-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars and zero cents to five million, four hundred two thousand, two hundred sixty dollars and zero cents. Department of Health and Human Services: HHS Director's Office: Salaries and Wages from one million, seventy-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars and zero cents to one million, one hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and zero cents. HHS Director's Office: Other Expenses from seven hundred and nine thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and zero cents to five hundred seventy-four dollars, five hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars and zero cents. Environmental Health: Salaries and Wages from one million, four hundred twelve thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars to one million, three hundred fifty thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars and zero cents. Disease Prevention: Salaries and Wages from three hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred six dollars and zero cents to five hundred forty-three, five hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars and zero cents. Community Health and Wellness: Salaries and Wages from four hundred and eight thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and zero cents to three hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars and zero cents. Senior Citizens Affairs: Salaries and Wages from five hundred thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars and zero cents to six hundred and seven thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars and zero cents. Senior Citizens Affairs: Other Expenses from one hundred thirty-one thousand, sixty-two dollars and zero cents to one hundred thirty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars and zero cents. Food and Nutrition: Salaries and Wages, four hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and zero cents to four hundred fifty-one thousand, seventy-nine dollars and zero cents. Veterans Affairs: Salaries and Wages from one hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred fifty dollars and zero cents to one hundred seventy thousand, two hundred fifty dollars and zero cents. Immigrant Affairs: Salaries and Wages from two hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars and zero cents to two hundred ninety-four thousand, five hundred fifty dollars and zero cents. Injury Prevention: Salaries and Wages from three hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred forty dollars and zero cents to three hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred twenty-seven dollars and zero cents. Injury Prevention: Other Expenses from two million, three hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and zero cents to three hundred, sorry, to five hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and zero cents. Department of Housing, Economic Development and Commerce: HEDC Director's Office: Salaries and Wages from six hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars and zero cents to seven hundred seven thousand, nine hundred dollars and zero cents. HEDC Director's Office: Other Expenses from eight thousand, nine hundred dollars and zero cents to seven thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars and zero cents. City Planning: Salaries and Wages from one million, three hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty dollars and zero cents to one million, two hundred eighteen dol, two hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred eighty dollars and zero cents. Planning Board: Other Expenses from one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred dollars and zero cents to one hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars and zero cents. Zoning: Salaries and Wages from seven hundred seventy-one thousand, two hundred twelve dollars and zero cents to seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars and zero cents. Housing Preservation: Salaries and Wages from eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and zero cents to eight hundred forty-seven thousand, seventy-six dollars and zero cents. Housing Prevention: Other Expenses from eighty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents to fifty-five thousand, four hundred fifty dollars and zero cents. Instruction Code: Salaries and Wages from three million, nine hundred seven dollar, nine hundred seven thousand, two hundred forty-one hundred dollars and zero cents to three million, four hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and zero cents. Instruction Code: Other Expenses from one hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars and zero cents to one hundred and two thousand, three hundred dollars and zero cents. Commerce: Salaries and Wages from five hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars and zero cents to five hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars and zero cents. Commerce: Other Expenses from twenty thousand dollars and zero cents to one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars and zero cents. Affordable Housing: Salaries and Wages from four hundred eighty, from four hundred eighty thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars and zero cents to three hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and zero cents. Community Development: Other Expenses from one thousand, seven hundred dollars and zero cents to fifty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars and zero cents. Department of Recreation and Youth Development: Enrichment: Salaries and Wages from eight hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and zero cents to eight hundred eighteen thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and zero cents. Recreation: Salaries and Wages from three million, five hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred seventy-eight dollars and zero cents to three million, five hundred twenty dollar, three million, five hundred twenty thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and zero cents. Parks Maintenance: Salaries and Wages from two million, three hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars and zero cents to two million, three hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars and zero cents. Parks Maintenance: Other Expenses from one million, seven hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars and zero cents to one million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars and zero cents. Department of Infrastructure: Infrastructure Director's Office: Salaries and Wages from three hundred fifty thousand, five hundred dollars and zero cents to five hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and zero cents. Architecture: Salaries and Wages from nine hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred eighty-nine dollars and zero cents to eight hundred sixty-two thousand, five, four hundred eighty-nine dollars and zero cents. Engineering: Salaries and Wages from one million, one hundred thirty thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars and zero cents to nine hundred fifty-three thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars and zero cents. Transportation Planning: Salaries and Wages from two hundred eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred eleven dollars and zero cents to two hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred eleven dollars and zero cents. Transportation Planning: Other Expenses from five million, five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars and zero cents to six million, sixty-five thousand dollars and zero cents. Sustainability: Salaries and Wages from two hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars and zero cents to one hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents. Innovation: Salaries and wages, five hundred seventy, five hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars and zero cents to four hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars and zero cents. Employee Group, Employee Group Health Insurance, one hundred eleven million, two hundred fifty-three thousand dollars and zero cents to one hundred one million, four hundred thousand dollars and zero cents. Municipal Rent, from seven hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars to seven hundred and two thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and zero cents. Municipal Publicity, fifteen thousand dollars and zero cents to zero. Other Municipal Advertising, ten thousand dollars and zero cents to zero. Professional Affiliations, ten thousand dollars and zero cents to zero. Salary Adjustment, one million, two hundred thousand dollars and zero cents to zero. Community Particip, Community Participatory Budget Program, from zero to three hundred thousand dollars and zero cents. Total Operation Within Caps, from four hundred seventy, four hundred seventy-three thousand, fifty, four hundred seventy-three million, fifty-five thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and zero cents to four hundred fifty-six million, one hundred twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars and zero cents. Contingent, from one hundred thousand dollars and zero cents to one hundred thousand dollars and zero cents. Total Operating, Total Operations Including Contingent Within Caps, from four hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred fifty-five, four hundred, sorry, four hundred seventy-three million, one hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and zero cents to four hundred fifty-six million, two hundred twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars and zero cents. Details: Salaries and Wages from two hundred seventy-six million, one hundred two thousand, two, four hundred twenty-seven dollars and zero cents to two hundred seventy million, sixty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars and zero cents. Other Expenses Including Contingent, from one hundred ninety-seven million, fifty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars and zero cents to one hundred six million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-one dollars and zero cents. Deferred Charges and Statutory Expenditures Within Caps. Prior Years Bills, eighty-four thousand, six hundred and three dollars and eighty-one cents to ninety-six thousand, eighty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. Overexpenditure of Appropriations, from seven million, thirteen thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars and fourteen cents to four million, eight hundred nine dollars, eight, eight hundred thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Overexpenditure of Appropriation Revenues, from twenty thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-one cents to zero. Expenditures Without Appropriations, from zero to twenty thousand, five hundred eighteen, no, sorry, twenty million, five hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred fifty dollars and seventy-three cents. Public Employees Retirement System, from four million, eight hundred seventy-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents to five hundred, five million, three hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred two dollars and sixty cents. Social Security System, from six million, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents to six million dollars and no cents. Jersey City Employment Retirement System, from thirteen million, three hundred thousand dollars and zero cents to twelve million, six hundred forty thousand dollars, six hundred forty thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and zero cents. Total Deferred Charges and Statutory Expenditures Within Caps, eighty-five million, one hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty dollars and fifty-three cents to one hundred and two million, four hun, five hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents. Total General Appropriations for Municipal Purposes Within Caps, five hundred fifty-eight million, three hundred three thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-three cents to five hundred fifty-eight million, seven hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and eighteen cents. Other Operations Excluded From Caps. State of Emergency Overtime, four hundred thousand and zero cents to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents. Community Participatory Budget Program, from three hundred thousand dollars and zero cents to zero. Overexpenditure of State and Federal Aid, from twenty-four million, nine hundred eighty-four thousand, ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents to zero. Employee Group, Employee Group Health Insurance, from zero to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents. Total Other Operations Excluded From Caps, from forty-three million, eight hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-four cents to nineteen million, six hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars and zero cents. Public and Private Programs Offset by Revenues. Matching Funds for Grants, from three hundred twenty-four thousand, seventy-eight dollars and zero cents to four hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars and zero cents. FHWA Subregional Transportation Planning Program, from one hundred five thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and zero cents to two hundred eleven thousand, sixty dollars and zero cents. OLPH Strengthening Capacity, from zero to two hundred seventy-four thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars and zero cents. Clean Communities, from zero to four hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirteen cents. Transit Village, from zero to one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars and zero cents. Body Armor Replacement Fund, from zero to thirty-three thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. BJA Coronavirus Emergency BJA Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental, from zero to 465,206 dollars and zero cents. Body Armor Replacement, from zero to 58,813 dollars and 63 cents. NJUCF Stewardship, from zero to 50,000 dollars zero cents. Federal Highway Administration Morris Canal Greenway, from zero to 5,142,980 dollars and zero cents. OLPH Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program, from zero to 643,872 dollars and zero cents. NJLM Virtual Learning, from zero to 10,000 dollars and zero cents. Sustained Enforcement Grant, from zero to 39,960 dollars and zero cents. UEZ Off Duty Police, from zero to 986,481 dollars and zero cents. UEZ Administrative Budget, from zero to 394,593 dollars and zero cents. Community Service Block Grant, from zero to 342,611 dollars and zero cents. Federal EHE, from zero to 300,000 dollars and zero cents. WIC, from zero to 1,874,288 dollars and zero cents. Total Public and Private Programs Offset by Revenues, from 10,165,878 and 34 cents to 21,621,745 dollars and 98 cents. Total Operations Excluded From Caps, 53,995,635 dollars and 28 cents to 41,263,406 dollars and 98 cents. Details, Salaries and Wages, 400,000 dollars and zero cents to 750,000 dollars and zero cents. Other Expenses, 53,595,600, sorry, from 53,595,635 dollars and 28 cents to 40,517,406 dollars and 98 cents. Last Page. Municipal Debt Service Excluded From Caps. Bond Anticipation Notes Interest, from 4,462,516,23 cents to 2,924,191 dollars and 23 cents. Bond Anticipation Notes Principal, General Capital, from 3,8751 dollars and 74 cents to 1,762,182 dollars and 12 cents. Capital Lease Program Principal, from 3,749,407 dollars and 46 cents to 1,025,167 dollars and 50 cents. Capital Lease Program Interest, from zero to 3,128,694 dollars and 65 cents. Total Municipal Debt Service Excluded From Caps, 58,686,272,52 cents to 56,305,839 dollars and 59 cents. With Prior Consent of Local Finance Board Cash Deficit of Preceding Year, from zero to 35,531,579 dollars and 40 cents. Total General Appropriations for Municipal Purposes Excluded From Caps, from 129,800,14 dollars and 80 cents to 150,222,925 dollars and 97 cents. Total General Appropriations Excluded From Caps, from 130,998,164 dollars and 80 cents to 151,411,75 dollars and 97 cents. Subtotal General Appropriations Excluded From Caps, 689,291,339 dollars and 33 cents to 710,184,606 dollars and 15 cents. Reserve for Uncollected Taxes, from 5,972,859 dollars and 15 cents to 14,633,996 dollars and 87 cents. Summary of Appropriations. Total General Appropriations for Municipal Purposes Within Caps, 558,303,174 dollars and 53 cents to 558,773, sorry, 558,773, all right, 558,773,530 dollars and 18 cents. Other Operations, 43,829,756 dollars and 94 cents to 19,645,661 dollars and zero cents. Uniform Construction Code, from zero to zero. Shared Services Agreement, from zero to zero. Additional Appropriations Offset by Revenues, from zero to zero. Public and Private Programs Offset by Revenues, from 10,165,878,74 cents, and 34 cents, sorry, to 21,621,745 dollars and 98 cents. Total Operations Excluded From Caps, from 53,995,635 dollars and 28 cents to 41,267,406 dollars and 98 cents. Capital Improvements, from 6,550,000 dollars and zero cents to 6,550,000 dollars and zero cents. Municipal Debt Service, from 58,686,279 dollars and 52 cents to 56,305,839 dollars and 59 cents. Total Deferred Charges, 10,568,500, sorry, 10,568,100 dollars and zero cents to 10,568,100 dollars and zero cents. Judgments, zero to zero. Cash Deficit, with prior written consent of the local finance board, from zero to 35, 300, sorry, 35,531,579 dollars and 40 cents. Local District School Purposes, from 1,188,150 dollars and zero cents to 1,188,150 dollars and zero cents. Transfer to Board of Education, from zero to zero. Reserve for Uncollected Taxes, from 5,972,859 dollars and 15 cents to 14,633,996 dollars and 87 cents. Total General Appropriations, 695,264,198 dollars and 48 cents to 724,818,603 dollars and 2 cents. That is the conclusion of the municipal budget.
Next week, John, I'm giving a speed reading class.
If there's anyone still awake, we'll now have a public hearing on the proposed budget as amended. Anyone wishing to speak, please line up in front of the podium. You must confine your remarks to the budget. Because it's a public hearing on the budget, each speaker will be allotted five minutes. You will note the countdown timer to my left, your right. Is there anyone to speak? Well, all right. Motion to close the public hearing made by, I think that was, Council President Waterman, the second was, I believe, Prinzari? Oh, sorry, Councilperson Ridley, okay. Okay. On the motion to close the public hearing, how do you vote? Councilperson Ridley?
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzari?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bojano?
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh?
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon?
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilperson Dejez?
Aye.
Council President Protem Rivera?
No, he's not here.
And Council President Waterman?
Aye.
Okay. The motion to close the public hearing passes 8-0 with Councilman Rivera absent. Okay. For final adoption of Agenda Item 10.1, Resolution 22-753, how do you vote? Councilperson Ridley?
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzari?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bojano?
Aye.
Councilman Saleh?
I just wanted to put some remarks on the record. Okay. So, we're being asked to essentially make a Sophie's Choice here. Essentially, I just want to ask a few questions, if that's possible. Like, what happens if we don't vote for this budget? What are the potential consequences?
Oh, here you go. Here go the Protem.
I would just note that Councilperson Rivera is...
Can I answer that question, John?
Let him, let him.
No, I'll answer it for her.
This is to the administration.
I just have to note that Councilman Rivera is now present at 5:25 PM.
So, as discussed, I think, through this entire budget process this year, it's not ideal to be here. And we are at a hard point that if this does not get adopted today, I won't be able to collect on our fourth quarter billings and make continued operations. And so, I understand that the council has been a part of this process in deciding this. And so, I'm asking you to please consider what we have to do and get ahead of next year's budget process, which will be much different.
So, essentially, city services would go into halt?
No. We'll lose 26 million in state funds.
So, essentially, we're being told to vote for this tax increase or, you know, and hurt the residents. Essentially, tax increase on ourselves, friends, our family members, and if we don't, then, you know, there'll be furloughs, layoffs, everything's going to come to halt. And I just, we need to rein in the leviathan. You know, this needs to get reined in, the overspending. We need this budget process to start earlier. You know, we need to set up that finance committee. We need to start checking in every two weeks to make sure that every department is, you know, within their spending limits. You've seen me up here discuss, you know, whether it's COVID contracts or the IXP contract from last week. Like, we need to really rein this in because if not, you know, I'm going to have to vote no next year. And, you know, it's going to be very difficult. This process can't happen the same way next year. And I've discussed reining in the, you know, vehicle use policy for this city. We can't continue to squeeze blood from a stone in this city. The taxpayers are hurting, and we criticize the Board of Education for the tax increases, and here we are. Like, I don't feel good about this vote. I just want everyone to know that because, essentially, we're going to be raising taxes on ourselves, and it's going to hurt the most vulnerable. The overtime in the police department, I want to know where the 900 officers are. Where are they hiding? Like, I have to beg and plead for six units in the North District, and that's 12 officers. So, where is everyone else? Where are the police officers? Where's the overtime going? You know, we have the 911 center with non-emerg, that they try to export, outsource to another, like privatize it. And I'm totally against that. That's a critical function of government and this city. But we also have the Resident Response Center. We have the new 3-1-1. We have the non-emergency number. We need to start merging all of these things when it comes to, you know, DPW, when we're outsourcing contracts. I know they've been better as of late when it comes to the vehicles, like outsourcing it to get fixed, but we need to either train people or send it out to get fixed. Like, we can't have this duality where the contracts continue to go out for the vehicles. And this is a clarion call. You know, we need to, I hope my council colleagues will hold every department head accountable, and every department needs to be held accountable. We need to make sure there's GPS on every vehicle, that they don't allow the vehicles to go out of the city limits. Like, there's so many things that we need to be doing, and it's just, it behooves me. Like, I want to say for the record that this is not an easy vote. It's probably the hardest vote any of us could cast. That being said, this process, we have to learn from it. Next year, February, March, like, we need substantive results, and if not, there's going to be a no vote from me next year. With that, I will vote aye on the contingency that this not happen again the way it happened this year. And the only saving grace we have is the Anchor Program, and the Anchor Program will essentially allow our residents to break even. Other than that, I'm totally opposed to tax increases, especially when I know we can trim the fat. That I vote aye.
Youssef, can I add on to what you were saying? I'd like to say something. What you just said was very good, but I'd like to know one big thing. Where, there's almost a billion, 600 million dollars in ratables that this city has not collected because we, all this new development in this city of Jersey City, nothing is being done to collect the money, nothing is being done to reappraise the buildings that are going up, and it's a shame. I can name a load of places, 99 Ocean Avenue and a whole series of buildings that are not paying the proper taxes that we, the one and two homeowner, family homeowners are paying. And it's got to change. The Tax Assessor's Office has got to get out there, and they got to reappraise these buildings and make them pay their fair share. You got people living downtown in luxury buildings paying a tenth of probably what I'm paying in taxes or what everybody else up here who owns a house is paying. And then, we have other issues. The 26 million dollars we're going to lose from the state, that's the only reason I'm voting for it. And as I said, things have to change here because this can't continue. I'm tired of paying taxes. I was out this morning walking the streets, speaking to numerous neighbors, and they are furious, and they're blaming us here on the council for this. No, we're in a crisis here in the city, and next year, this better get straightened out. I'm going to be around for three more years, and I'm not keeping my mouth shut no more.
Councilperson Solomon?
So, let me just put on the record that we'll be asking for regular updates from the administration on the question of added assessments and whether those are going to be properly taxed in this year. We'll be following up on questions around when the, I don't know, great prayers would be consultant came on to help with this budget and when that contract was given to the council. Let me just sort of state this. I mean, to me, I said earlier, I think there are good people doing this work and trying their best, but the only word I have for this is unacceptable. It's the only word, unacceptable. We are months overdue, and I honestly feel like I have to be a detective to figure out what's going on. Our job is to engage in oversight here and not shy away from that. And there has to be significant change to this process in the coming years. The delay, the uncovery of cash deficits, 36 million dollars, that were not discussed in our budget hearings or will discuss that portion of, you know, it sort of made our budget hearings irrelevant. irrelevant. We were tens of millions of dollars off in what we were talking about. Hours and hours and hours of our time, the council's time, staff's time, you know, wasted. And the result is a major tax increase with an additional tax increase because of the delay. Roughly $10 million because we don't have a tax sale this year. And this budget is plugged with $70 million in ARP revenue, American Rescue Plan, that we don't have next year. I asked in the budget hearings what the plan was. We heard some ideas, but not a plan, right? Not as, how are we filling this gap so we're not raising taxes? And I looked through the amendment and I understand why the Budget Office made their choices because they have to get a balanced budget passed. The whole city needs to function on a balanced budget pass. But let me just list a couple of things that are now cut from the budget. Staffing positions and affordable housing. Engineering, city planning, architecture, construction code. All core positions that we need to deal with the rampant development in the city. A 75% cut to the Community Crisis Response Program touted in press releases. Designed to have mental health professionals with police officers. Ideally funded through other sources, but to date, we passed this in the spring and no program yet in October. But there's also increases in here. There's merit increases, there's overtime increases, and there's the 2021 Police OT over expenditure, $3 million we're paying for last year's over expenditures. You know? The facts speaks for themselves. And it's a collective failure. We didn't do enough oversight. Administration produced a poor budget. I can't vote for it in my good conscience. I can't, you know. Can't do it. So I vote no.
Councilperson Gilmore?
I just want to say that. There's people in positions that get paid to do a job. You get paid to produce, you get paid to do a job. And sometimes we have to make hard decisions. And when those decisions are not the correct decisions, we put others in harm's way. First of all, I don't even like being in a position where we kind of, it's almost a lose-lose situation either way you vote. I just think we have to do better as a collective as it relates to making sure people are prepped to do the test. I've always criticized the police. Things like, you know, the police job is hard and I'm like, well, they signed up for it, right? And the same concept applies here is that, you know, people have a job, people apply for jobs and as the previous two council people said, this is essentially unacceptable. We're right out of COVID. We're really not even in the clear of COVID, but we're right out of COVID. And we're seeing increase, property on top of the Board of Ed increases. And then we have departmental heads getting increased, right? So when you're looking at it and you're assessing everything, it's like, how are we doing this? And this is not in order. It's disheartening. Goodness gracious. I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote no. Going to vote no on this. Yeah, I vote no, John.
Thank you. Councilperson Dejez?
Yes.
Council President Pro Tem Rivera?
Aye.
And Council President Waterman?
Well, first of all, I want the public to know, we only have two more months really in the year. The truth of the matter is the budget is really done. Budget appeared to us very late. We was asking for the budget. I don't know what happened. We kept asking and, you know, we kept getting this comment, estate issues or whatever. So this budget is not like a happy budget we want to vote on, but the truth is though, the budget is done. There's only two months left. It is. And I just want the public to really to understand that. There's only two months left. We asked for a financial committee. I think the process in the budget needs to be changed. Whoever faulted is, I think there need to be some discipline there because we kept asking for this budget. It's like we really don't, our hands are tied, to be perfectly honest. I want the public to understand our hands are tied. You only have two months left. We vote for the two months budget. That's what we're really voting on. It's two more, two more months left in this budget. And then next year, we have to start all over. But next year, I would prefer that the budget come to the council first. Change this process. That's what we can do. Process does not have to remain the same. So allow the council to see the budget first and then we can go on from there. Because after all, we are the ones that have to vote on the budget. Right? So with that, I do vote aye.
Okay. Thank you. To recap, Resolution 22-753 is adopted 7-2. That concludes today's agenda unless there is no other, unless there is any other business. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion made by Councilperson Waterman. Second was. Thank you. Okay. On the motion to adjourn, how do you vote? Councilperson Ridley? Councilperson Prinzari? Councilperson Bojano? Councilperson Saleh?
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon?
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore? Councilperson Dejez?
Aye.
Council President Pro Tem Rivera?
Aye.
And Council President Waterman? Okay. Motion carries nine zero to adjourn at 5:40 PM. Thank you very much. The next regularly scheduled meeting municipal council will be held October 26th. See you then. Thank you.